We have minutes from March 25th, thanks to Jill. If we have a motion to approve those.
All motion to approve the minutes?
Okay, a second?
Second.
By Ryan. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes. We have an agenda. Is there anything that anyone here or on the Commission or staff would like to add to the agenda? Nope. If not, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Nate, do we have a second?
Second.
Ryan, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Clara, for staff presentation on cannabis zoning, please.
Welcome back Planning Commission members. We're going, we're deviating a little bit from what we have been discussing to go back to a topic that we had discussed at length when the hemp laws passed. And now, as we're aware, there are updates to the laws and we will be seeing a change in the way that retail can happen in the state of Minnesota, possibly sooner than we thought. So I'm gonna just run through.
Is your mics on?
Yes.
Now we can hear you, yep.
Sorry.
No, I'm just thinking for people wa, if anyone ever watches this, which I'm hoping.
I'm sure many people watch this and love it. So, okay. So first, 2023 Minnesota Session Laws, Chapter 63 HF Number 100, or the Act. That is the, the act that allowed the sales of THC cannabis products in Minnesota to become legal beyond just the hemp-derived ones. So this act provides local units of government certain authority, so we are allowed to require local registration, adopt reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of the operation of a cannabis business, limit the number of cannabis businesses based on the population of our community, and prohibit the operation of cannabis businesses within up to 100 thou, or 1,000 feet of a school, 500 feet of a daycare residential treatment facility, or an attraction within a public park used by minors. Keep pushing the wrong button. There we go. The Act also started the Office of Cannabis Management, which is now up and running. Their job is to draft the rules that will become the framework essentially of licensing in the state of Minnesota. At this point, they have started drafting those rules, but there are no drafts available to the public. They've been going through a survey process, so they've sent out a lot of surveys to different communities and people. I think they've gotten over 7,000 responses on those surveys. They're going through the results now to, to draft their documents. They are going to, this summer, plan to host a feedback session on the draft documents that they have, so we should hopefully see something this summer then. And then after that, they will send them on to the State Register's office, and they'll allow a 30-day public comment period once those documents are with the State Register. So, in response to these new rules in Minnesota, the city of Fergus Falls put in place Ordinance Number 41, which put in place a moratorium on the sales of, of cannabis products. That was then amended in, I think, October of 2023 to also prohibit the opening of any new businesses that sell the hemp-derived products as well. So any that are currently open are allowed to continue operating, but anyone new is not allowed to be licensed through the city at this point in time, or registered with the city.
Question. So if one of those changes, or they went away, would they not open up one?
Say that again.
If, if, if those businesses went away, one of them went away, would one be able to replace that business? And is that correct? No?
No, not at this point in time. No. Okay, good question, though. Thank you. So, in order to, so what that moratorium allowed the city to do, or the reason that the city chose to do that mor, moratorium is to allow a period of study on the new rules that Minnesota is putting forward, so that we can integrate them into our current rules. So, the, in order to do that, the mayor put together a subcommittee of council members. Those members are Laura Jobe, Scott Rachels, and Scott Kwame. Scott is here with us tonight, Scott Kwame is. And that was also led by Chief Bergren, who is also with us and can help answer any questions about how that subcommittee has been working. But essentially, the study is going to explore the reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner of operation of a cannabis business, as is allowed for a city government to do. The small group, the subcommittee, I'm not even sure how many times they had met before inviting three members of the Planning Commission, but a few times, I think.
Four, four.
Four, five ti, four times. Invited three members of the Planning Commission to their April 10th meeting, just to share where they were in the process, and then what they hoped that Planning Commission would be able to offer. So the request that's been made of the Planning Commission, and what we're gonna be discussing here tonight, is buffer zones of up to 1,000 feet around a school, and up to 500 feet around a daycare residential treatment facility, or, or an attraction within a public park. So kind of picture like the splash pad is what I'm considering as like an attraction or a ball field. So the, what we heard from the subcommittee is that they, it's not a question of if the buffers go into place, it's a question of what those buffers are. They are very in favor of having buffers in place. So the extent of those is, is what they would like us to discuss. And then also discussing zones that are, would, would be appropriate to retail sales and manufacturing.
Can I make a comment on that last one? The mayor spoke with me after our subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
And he has rethought the negative connotation that was shared with the CUPs, and he is open to the CUPs in that. And so I think we should keep that in mind, that he reached out and let me know that.
All right, that is good to know. Thank you.
I think he was thinking the CUPs in the, whatever the, the Kmart area was zoned. Is that?
B6.
B6. I think he was thinking a CUP there, so then, like, for developers, they would, it would seem more obtainable.
Sure.
You know what I mean? Like, it wouldn't be quite the zoning change necessarily. It would be more, it would seem more in reach.
Yeah, okay. I, I think I see where you're going with that. All right, let's keep that in mind, then. Thank you. Yeah, so this is the feedback that we heard from the subcommittee, which is that they have a preference, I'm gonna say a slight preference, because not everyone had the same feeling, but the slight preference was to allow zoning, or allow sales in B6 zones and above, which is, you know, any, our industrial zones, et cetera, and not below that. So that would prohibit sales in, say, B3, which is our downtown zone. And then, as Laurel mentioned, they had discouraged the use of conditional use permits, but it sounds like the mayor might be open to it, so maybe we can include that back in our conversation.
And I think that had to do with, like, the production piece, too.
Yes, it did. Which we, I can get into that a little bit, too. Yeah, so, I will say, I haven't made any, like, real strong suggestions from a staff perspective. I really want this to be a discussion that Planning Commission has, and we, you know, choose a direction to go in. But what we would ultimately end up doing is, again, discussing the buffer zones, including those in our code language, and then the specific sections of city code that we would be recommending updates to would be Chapter 154 and Chapter 120. And I think it would be important, as we are doing that work, to also consider the inclusion of updated or new definitions that have come out with the, with the State Regulations. So I figured first, we could maybe talk about our, the buffer zones around schools. So again, we can regulate up to 1,000 feet around a school building. In Fergus Falls, and I have a map. So this is a Parks and Schools map.
Can we make that a little?
Yeah, we can make it bigger. I also have the GIS pulled up, too, so if we wanna zoom in on stuff more easily, we can. So, does any member of the Planning Commission who was at the subcommittee meeting maybe wanna weigh in on discussions surrounding buffer zones around schools that you overheard from the council members?
I think there was concern about how much, like, Lincoln in particular. Like, I think, I don't know if concerned, I think they, they want a big buffer zone, but I think that there were some there that felt like we could be too big. I also think that there were some council members that felt like nothing in some zones versus buffer zone. You know what I mean? Not even allowing things in certain zones.
Does that match what you guys, your take on it was?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think Lincoln's probably the biggest concern.
Because that one is squarely in, I believe it's like a B6 slash industrial zone.
So as we're looking at where Lincoln is, that circle, how far out does it go? Like, what buildings are included, or what plots? Can you, can we tell that, really?
Uh, hold on.
Like, is technically our liquor store within 1,000 feet?
I think it is.
That's, was my gut, too. To me, how, I guess it's regulated. If it's right, if a liquor store can be there, I don't know where people are at. Is it that different? I mean, I know it's different.
Well, I think by having a separate section of code for cannabis, you're seeing they're different.
Right. I mean, I think we should have buffers on. I'm just trying to figure out if the number's 1,000, just because that's what they give us, or how do people feel? And what, what is magic about 1,000? Maybe the chief can come up with that.
That's what the state legislator told us.
Okay.
So essentially, is your proposal, like, the most, and I'm not saying this in a bad way, but like, essentially, the state says we can do X, Y, and Z, and so the proposal is that we're gonna do the maximum amount that the state law allows us to do to limit the sales?
That's the, what I gathered from the committee. So I just try to facilitate the meetings. I tried to make zero recommendations throughout this process, but that's my understanding, is that the state has allowed us to set buffers up to this distance. That's the feeling that I've gotten from the committee.
Yeah.
Where they wanted to go.
Because I have, I guess my, I, I have two thoughts. One being, well, I have many thoughts, but one being kind of like, I guess, big picture is like, being a business-friendly community, and then also balancing the safety and welfare of our citizens. And so, and, you know, zoning it within the reasonable objective to accommodate both of those things, because I think they're both important. From a safety, you know, perspective, I guess, what are your thoughts on restricting it from, like, for example, like, our downtown? Because when I look at the zoning map, B6 and above is, like, very restrictive, when I just think about, like, like, a business owner wanting to.
Sure.
Can you maybe share what you said about it's, like, the crime concerns that you shared with the group?
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, I'm gonna be kind of careful how I answer some of these questions, because I think at times I wear many hats, you know, that of the police chief, but under public safety, I also have to deal with things that are more of a public health or a social service-type situation. So I, I think in general, part of the zoning, I think somebody asked the question of why, and I think it's basically that you want adult-type activities occurring in an adult-type zone. And when it comes to parks and schools, and you want things like schools and parks where it's, you know, kind of catering to children, you don't want adult-type activities occurring in those areas. I think that's been kind of the general discussion. You know, from a, specifically from a police or a crime standpoint, I would just say, the only concerns that I, that I really have are, one, these businesses are very susceptible to robbery. You know, they're a cash business. You can't use banking. You can't use credit cards. You can't use ATM cards. So historically, when you look at other states like Colorado, Oregon, Washington, these places are robbed at a very high rate, just because it's a, it's an easy target for, you know, high levels of cash to be kept there. I think some of the other things from, like, just hours of operation, you know, I think one thing that we talked about is limiting the hours of operation to around 9:00 or 10:00 PM. I think the later you go on into the evening, just like with liquor establishments and other things, the higher you have the potential for, again, whether it's robbery, assaults. I think in Dinky Town, there was a, a shooting at an, at an establishment earlier this spring, you know, and I think it happened around, you know, 1:30 in the morning. So, from a crime perspective, you know, those are really my two biggest concerns. Really don't have anything to do from zoning. I mean, M&amp;H is downtown. That's probably the last commercial business where we've had a robbery. And, you know, we've had, you know, Bank of the West out by the Fleet Farm that was robbed, you know, 10, 15 years ago. So I don't know if placement or zoning really pertains to the, to that type of, yeah, yeah. So.
I, I, the other thing, I was, I was reading a couple of things. The high traffic and the coming and going by schools. I know they talked about that.
Yep.
With child trafficking things a little bit, that there's just a lot of people movement around, because you're in and you're out. You know what I mean?
Sure.
Like, there's a lot of people coming and going, so I read that. And then the other thing I was reading is, three national banks are looking at starting to allow their cards to be used in these entities. I think Chase and Bank of America were two of them. And so it, I mean, not that that's an immediate thing, but it, it could be on the horizon where it's a less cash-heavy business at some point.
And there is, you know, it's been introduced a number of times at the federal level to change some of the banking regulations to allow for, you know, these businesses to use, like, a transaction card or a credit card, and they, they've failed. And I think that's one thing with the council, too, and I don't generally like to speak for other groups, but I think one thing that we've discussed is, where we start today isn't necessarily where we're going to end, you know, tomorrow. I think so many things are going to evolve with this, with the sale of this product. You know, I think currently there's, I wanna say, 24 states that have legalized some form of cannabis use. You know, I think once, you know, just trying to predict the future here, I think once you start to see a majority of states legalizing it, you could see, like, banking regulations relaxed more. But is that gonna happen in the next six months? Probably not. You know, that's something that's probably gonna take the next three to five years. And I think that's the same with, you know, maybe just to kind of go back to your question. When we started the discussion about locations, this, the council, and maybe the Planning Commission, had made the recommendation, when we talked about the hemp-derived products that we started in the B3 zone. So that's where we started our discussion. And then we started adding, you know, these buffer zones. And so we have, like, Lake Region Halfway House, which is a residential treatment facility located, where it would impact a, a part of the downtown zone. And then, the other thing that came up was Speace Park. So that's really where the question started to lie, about a B3 zone and how these buffers, you know, would play in, into a B3 zone. And we started that conversation of, maybe the buffers don't apply downtown. It wasn't well received. I think when you, some of the members of the Planning Commission was there, I even introduced a map of a 250-foot buffer. And I think it's fair to say that that wasn't well received. And I think that's where they, as the committee kind of stuck with the B6.
I don't know if it wasn't well received by us. I think it was more of a council.
Yeah.
Just to, just so everyone knows, like, we weren't necessarily, yeah.
Yeah. So, and I think from my standpoint is, this, all these laws are evolving so quickly. And, you know, they just passed another law and say, or, I shouldn't say they passed a law. It moved out of the House, and I think there was a Senate version. They don't quite match up. But the rules are constantly changing, and it makes it very difficult for the city. So I think that's where the, the council felt like a B6 is a good starting point, because it's kind of on the West End. You know, I think they might be looking at, at it as a regional thing, because it's cities of over, you know, 12, 5. But again, you know, one of the things that I've tried to get across is, the decisions that we make today aren't, you know, set in stone. They can be changed. But I think what is important, regardless of what side of the debate you're on, is the fact that as a city that we at least, I shouldn't say define, but codify where these things can be built, so that, you know, developers know, coming in, that they shouldn't go buy a piece of property in a B2 zone, put a bunch of money into it, and then realize that that's not going to work for them. So I think that's kind of one of the big pushes right now, is just to find an area that everybody is comfortable with, and get it on the books, so that it's there, and then developers can, you know, start looking at different parcels that, that meet their needs. I think that's kind of the gist of, of how we ended up where, where we're at now.
Right. And maybe Scott can speak to this, too. So you, and you kind of mentioned it, Kyle, but just so everyone is aware, my understanding of the law is that, and maybe this has been updated, but my understanding is, is that there's, a city only has to issue one license for every 12,500 people. And we're above that population, but Fergus, it, that doesn't get triggered again until you hit another 12,500 people. So technically, Fergus only has to issue one license to one business. So we're not talking about necessarily, like,
Thousands of these.
Thousands of these are like, you know, there's gonna be, we're gonna become.
And there's been talk of, you know, anywhere from like, two to eight, depending on the categories, because there's different categories.
Right.
Like the produce, like the cultivating and all of that. So, I mean, we're probably talking less than 10 total, right?
And, and I think the other thing that.
Because Sarah's right.
Yeah. I mean, and that's the other thing, too, is I think we try to anticipate or predict things a little too much at times. And, and I'll just say, you know, you know, the conversation has been anywhere from, you know, two licenses to three licenses issued. You know, what, what the council ends up with, I don't know, but at least in our working group, those are the types of numbers that have been thrown out.
For retail.
For, for, yeah, for retail. So retail would constitute retail, micro, or a mezzo business. The other thing, too, is I don't think that what the state has outlined as businesses, as a retail, micro, and mezzo necessarily are gonna be the same a year from now. So I know one of the issues that got brought up was, like, a micro and a mezzo business allows you to do certain types of processing, and it really should be done in an industrial zone. And I, I think, you know, the closest city around us that's going through the same process that we are is Brainerd, and they talked about micro and mezzos being an industrial zone. So I think, I think we're all kind of on board with the same line of thinking, but I think at some point, you know, let's say, an establishment wants to have a commercial kitchen. They don't necessarily process the raw product. They probably don't need to be in an industrial zone.
And I think that's where the mayor was getting at with me of doing the conditional use in that B6.
But, but that's where the, the legislature has kind of failed, because they've only, you know, given us certain pots to choose from. And, and you can have a retail business, which means you can just basically sell things. But if you wanna do anything above that, you automatically jump into these micro or mezzo businesses. And even if you, you know, even if you say, "Well, I'm not gonna do a lot of the things that the license allows me to do," the fact of the matter is, you can still do them, and they should still be zoned according to what the, the license allows. So I do think at some point, you're gonna see the legislature come back and create another type of license that's kind of in between a retailer and a micro business. And then the other part of it, that I think we're, sometimes we kind of get ahead of ourselves, is the fact of, we don't know who's gonna get the license and open up a business in town. I think at times, we all think that there's, you know, people in town that wanna have a license, but we don't know if they'll be selected to have a license. And we really shouldn't be making laws based on, you know, personal interests anyways. We should just be making laws that are equal for everybody for that opportunity. So I think that is kind of, at times, clouded people's perceptions of this process, in the, in the sense that, well, they want, you know, kind of a mom and pop, or, you know, more of a grassroots business to grow here. But, I mean, we've had people from South Dakota, we've had people from the cities inquire about different properties in town. So there's no guarantee of who's gonna get a license, who's gonna operate. You know, all of that is gonna be controlled by St. Paul. So I think, you know, those are things that we have to at least acknowledge and ensure that we're not making zoning decisions or ordinance decisions that, you know, potentially could benefit or discourage certain people, too.
Can the buffer zones be different? Can we have a school buffer zone, a park buffer zone, and a treatment center buffer zone?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I totally think that the school in the, in the treatment buffer zone seems reasonable. They said, that seems reasonable to me. I don't know where the, where's the.
Do you have that map that you had?
We said.
So Lake Region Halfway House is kind of across the street from, it's on Union.
Like Goodyear, kind of, right?
Yeah, across from Goodyear.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's just, looks like a two-story house.
Yep.
So but downtown, there's a daycare.
Yep, we forgot about the daycare.
There's a daycare in that old, like, where Envision used to be before they built, or that flower shop.
There's a flower shop there, too.
Previously.
At, is it Cascade and?
Oh, by the railroad.
By the railroad tracks, yes. Yep.
Well, and long ago, it was Viking Library.
Oh, yeah. Yep. And then there's the parks, Speace Park downtown, which, and the water park. So, I mean, you, you start putting all those pieces in, you basically eliminate almost all of downtown.
And I think that's where the shift to the B6 zones.
So is the buffer as the crow flies, or is it walking distance or driving distance?
As the crow flies.
Yeah.
From the edge of the property, not the edge of the building, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So, but yeah, like, it's basically all of downtown, if we do 1,000. But you, like you said, you had a map that was 250, didn't you?
No, parks, daycares, and residential treatment is only 500 feet.
Yep.
Schools are the most.
Oh, schools are the 1,000, okay. But it still took most of downtown out. Okay.
So if we kept the maximum buffers, and if we assign B6 as the appropriate zone, there's very little conflict between the two of those.
Yeah, I don't think anybody had issues with B6.
Yeah.
And, and really, you know, I'm thinking schools kind of an odd, I mean.
B6.
You took a commercial property and you made it to a school.
That's the only one that's in conflict.
And I don't think it, you know, there might be a handful, like the Jimmy John's Strip Mall.
That's right on the edge.
You know, down to around Super 8.
Because like, that, that old dent-up pure building, I know that had been looked at at one point by a developer.
That would be within the 1,000 feet. And then it would probably take out, like, McDonald's and over towards the liquor store.
So the lot behind the liquor store the city owns would be out.
Probably about a block either way of that driveway entrance to. Probably about a block, uh, either way of that driveway entrance to, um, to Lincoln School would be affected.
How are people feeling? I mean, do we, how do people feel about not downtown, downtown? Go ahead. Either one of you.
I, I, I guess I support the thousand dollar or thousand feet for, for, uh, the schools. I just, it, it, when I, when I'm visualizing in my head these areas, I'm just not seeing a lot of opportunity for development and acquisition for a business to come in and operate in these areas. And maybe, maybe I'm incorrect and I need to, you know.
Well, I think you're right.
I, I, I just think it's
What's required of these buildings is expensive.
What?
What's required to do some of these things in the buildings? Like downtown, we talked about that, I mean, I don't know who spoke on that. They'd be hard to make, fit all these requirements, right?
Yeah, that's the one thing that we haven't touched on. That's our next topic is how building codes play into these different type of establishments. And so, and again, it all depends on what type of a business you're talking about. But what we're hearing is, you know, you could spend anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars in, in code requirements to make an existing building, you know, fit, um, for one of these businesses. I think a re, just a strictly retail establishment is probably gonna be a little bit, uh, less. But you start getting into a micro or a mezzo business, um, you're gonna have some pretty significant costs, um, just to bring the building up to code.
Yeah, and I, I do agree with you that I think for a micro or a mezzo, and I don't know enough really about them. But I, I think that they would probably, probably be more appropriate in a B six or industrial zone. I'm thinking more of the, the retail, you know, I, I look at the
The retail, the micro and mezzo will include retail too.
The new smoke and vape that opened up next to the liquor store. You know, I don't think they came here to open up their store to sell. I mean, you know, I mean, I, and I know, I know your point of view of like, don't plan, but they're right next to the liquor store. So I mean, that's a strategic move. I can see, you know. But I just, again, I, you know, I think that building codes will limit people. Amount of licenses will limit people where, you know, our downtown isn't gonna get overrun. But I'm just looking at this and I'm just saying, it makes sense. But it also practically speaking, when I'm just visualizing these areas, it seems very limiting, almost.
So are, are people of
Non-existent, you know what I mean?
Are people of the mindset B six and up? I mean, is that kind of where people's heads are?
Is B six all of the dark green that we see on this attachment that was part of your packet?
It's just those four little sections.
Yeah.
It's like
Or five, yeah.
This, this, this and that. And then the purple.
I mean, just by looking at it, there's not, there's not a lot there to really
But it would be B six and above. So it would be
It would be all the industrial too. It would include all the I's too.
Those are just little.
Yeah. So it would include the blue, the purple and the pink, like Sarah said.
But from a retail perspective, is, are the I's accessible?
That, that's where I'm, in my mind, I'm going because those mezzos and those, those two have retail components. And I don't know, they can, and they can also be like, I don't wanna say a brewery, but it can be an entertainment venue that has this available. And that, that's where I'm, I'm feeling like, but they could also include production. You can have production with an entertainment value, venue. I don't know that we want an entertainment value, venue out by the Humane Society. You, you know what I mean? Like to me, I would rather have that, have that some conditional use where we could look at the site and make some recommendations and have some guidelines on a case by case basis personally. Because if we just say, oh, it can be anywhere, then we're really opening it up to be anywhere. Where if we do conditional use, we can put conditions on it.
Well, if it can be permitted, just by the letter of the code, you know, we would need to feel pretty comfortable with what's shaded in here. Because there really isn't a second chance after that to say that it shouldn't be there. Cause it is permitted, it's, it de facto can be there.
Right. And I'm not talking retail for the conditional use. I'm talking the uppers.
Okay.
And the retail could be anything from a little building to a big building. I mean, it, it could be any of the above, I think.
So why is the retail of this different than like our liquor store?
Yeah, there's, I mean, we, we, we kind of talked about this and there's some, you know, whether you agree or disagree with it. But, you know, I think part of it, like, again, I'll use our West End liquor store. That was there before the school was ever there.
Right.
You know, so
It's also seventeen hundred feet away.
I think making that argument, you know, that our, that liquor store is in a thousand feet is
It's actually like seventeen hundred feet.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think one of the things that we, we have to remember too is, um, you know, they are different. Uh, liquor is an allowed, you know, you can still argue it's a controlled substance, but it's an allowed controlled substance. It's regulated, uh, by the state. It's also regulated by the federal government. And it, it allows, it, it's permissive to, you know, take place in, in, in certain areas. You know, cannabis right now truly isn't legal. You know, the state of Minnesota has basically said, uh, you know, recreational cannabis, we're not going to enforce the laws. The federal government, um, takes a, a completely different look at it and says, no, it is illegal. And, um, like I said, it, it goes to the point where it ensures that banking and other, uh, types of federally regulated activities aren't allowed there. But I think from a policy perspective, uh, they have stopped short of, of going into a state and enforcing federal law at some of these facilities. But today, if, um, you know, DEA wanted to go into Colorado and start seizing all the marijuana at these dispensaries, they couldn't do that, uh, under law. So
I understand the law perspective. Um, I guess I'm more looking for the public health risk.
Sure. Yeah, I, I guess I, um, I just think wherever you have a liquor store, that's an adult use. And I personally wouldn't, like if, out on the West End, if you had a, a cannabis establishment behind the liquor store, I wouldn't have an issue. Along, um, College Way there behind Fleet Farm, I think is an I two zoning. That was one of the areas that we talked about, uh, as an allowable use. If the store was there, I wouldn't have any issues with that.
So do we need to have, if we say B six and up, do we need a buffer?
I think
I'm not saying that's my opinion. I'm just asking.
I think the buffer is gonna go into place regardless of what zone we go in. Just again, kind of going from the council's perspective. I don't, the, the only time the buffer became an issue is when we talked about B three downtown. Because we had the splash pad, we had the daycare and we had the residential treatment facility downtown. And so that buffer, you know, really kind of nullified, uh, if you had the buffer in place, it kind of nullified anything, uh, going downtown. You know, maybe, uh, across from FM Bank, you know, if somebody bought that lot, that would probably be outside the buffer.
So, so if it was just, excuse me, for sake of argument, if it was B six and up and the buffer would come into play if we loosened up conditional use, right?
Well, I think the person, what my head was going with the conditional use was B six and up for retail. And B six, only way B six gets mezzo or micro is with a conditional use. That's where my head is. And that's just my personal belief.
And I think too, that, you know, for some of you that weren't at the meeting, um, like an example was one of the big box stores that sits on Lincoln Avenue, uh, by Olson Oil. It's in a B six zone.
So read between the lines, people.
It's, it's in a B six zone, but it's immediately adjacent to an I two.
Right.
And so I think the mayor brought up, you know, with that particular business, be okay. It's in a B six with a conditional use. I think the council, and again, I won't give you consensus because I don't know a consensus from that. I, I'll just say this, the council hasn't been opposed to, to rezone. And, um, you know, there's another, uh, empty building out on the west end of town, uh, near the intersection of Lincoln and Western that another entity has shown interest in. And it's immediately across the street from a B six zone. I don't know if it's a B two or, but anyways, I don't think anybody had any objection to that being, uh, rezoned to a B six.
I think that that's a good thing that they're open to it. I think the problem is, is developers might not see it as easy to be, if they see conditional use, it's approachable. You know what I mean? As you just take a first look, but go ahead.
It's hard to buy a property.
Uh huh.
Decide that you have to, yeah. I think we have to remember that any restrictions or regulations that the city is putting in place have to be reasonable. And I, I think I disagree that rezoning is a reasonable restriction to say like, yep, you can put a business wherever you want, but you're gonna have to rezone it because it's expensive and they'd have to purchase the property first.
Before they can apply.
Before they can do that.
Yeah. And I would say that that's true if there were no other zones to build, but you do have other options to build. It's just that if you want this particular parcel, you might have to look at, at a rezone.
I just, I think knowing we have big boxes in the mall that's sitting empty in that zone, that some of this could be a good fit for, that would bring, you know, good paying jobs and think, you know what I mean? Like, we have to not, we have to set ourselves up for success too, is kind of my gut feeling. I don't know.
And again, I'm just, um,
I'm not shooting the messenger. I'm just like, I know.
I don't feel that way too. And, and really, you know, my, my whole goal is to try to find some common ground, you know? I know in the past, you know, the planning commission has made recommendations and the council, um, doesn't like them or sends them back. And, and so my whole purpose here is to just hopefully try to find that common ground, uh, now. Uh, one, because I think we're under a little bit of a time crunch. And, um, and two, I just think government works better when, you know, we can find consensus and things. So I guess, you know, I, I'm not opposing. I think you as a planning commissioner have the right to make whatever recommendations you want. I would just say that if you're gonna make recommendations on conditional use, that they have to be in a, in a, a B, like a micro or mezzo has to be in a B six zone. And there has to be some other conditions. And, um, you know, we'll just see what the council says. But I don't, I don't think at this point that seems unreasonable.
Claire, what, go ahead.
Well, what did the map look like when you put a two hundred and fifty foot buffer downtown? Or, and yeah, why was that rejected?
Well, um, I, you know, why it was rejected, I guess, I'll just say, I, I don't think the council cared for it.
It could have been a fifty, it could have been a fifty foot buffer.
Yeah, the mayor, yeah, the mayor was, I think, uh, no, that's fine. Maybe he had a different opinion, but again, just kind of going off of the, the feedback from the council. So it, it basically cut, uh, Lincoln Avenue in half. So I think there were businesses on the north side of Lincoln, um, where it would have been allowed. And then pretty much everything on the south side of Lincoln would have been out. But then we forgot to, to talk about the daycare. Yeah.
What about the place by the liquor store?
That was still in.
This would be fine. That would have been fine.
Yeah.
So it would, and same thing, Washington Avenue would have cut Washington Avenue down the middle. North side would probably have been out. Uh, south side would have been. You know, the other thing too is there's three, three hundred for four hemp derived businesses are downtown. You know, one of them has already indicated that they're looking, you know, they're hoping that they get a license and they're already looking to move somewhere else. So I think that's another thing to be kind of cautious of is just because businesses exist downtown, that might not be an ideal location for them. They might be looking for places elsewhere. And I just think, you know, when you talk about a downtown business, you know, you know, parking is probably
That's where my head was.
First thing that comes to my mind is, um, you know, people kind of want to park right in front of the store that they're going to. And, and I don't think that that's gonna be conducive to
I think as well as the, the size of the buildings downtown just aren't conducive to a dispensary. Where, um, I was just reading that they suggest or is recommended twenty-five hundred to five thousand to start up a dispensary.
Yeah.
And there's not a lot of space down there that's gonna offer you that. And then if you do start too small and then you need to expand, what do you do? So it's tough.
You're kind of caught, yeah. And I think that's the biggest thing is the startup cost of this is gonna be pretty significant. The other thing of trying to retrofit a, a downtown, you know, a lot of, not all, but a lot of them, you know, you either have shared walls, you have living spaces above. When you go into the code enforcement side of things, you have to have, you know, a filtered ventilation system. It has to be separate from anything else in the property. I mean, there are some challenges to being
The code will filter things out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the cost of the code will filter things out. Even if it's doable, I think it's gonna become a thing where, how much money? I mean, you're gonna have to have, I mean, honestly, nothing against any of our mom and pops, but you're probably not gonna be a mom and pop to be able to do a lot of this.
Yeah. Yeah. And, yeah, I would agree with that. And I think that, you know, the people that have approached the city looking at places, they're looking at standalone businesses that are, you know, kind of substantial in size. They're not really looking, I don't know what a typical downtown, you know, storefront is. But I would agree with Wayne that they're probably not conducive to what most people are looking for. And I think, and I don't know, even know how many retail establishment or retail licenses people are gonna seek. I, I have, you know, my feeling is people are gonna go for these micro and mezzo type licenses because it just gives you the ability to do so much more.
So under the state, they're, they're totally separate licensures, the retail, mezzo, micro?
Yeah, the license itself. And there's a, I think there's a memo in your packet and it just kind of gives you a brief description what you can do at each of those types of establishments.
And just so, and everyone probably understands this, but you have to get the license from the state as well as from the city.
Yeah.
So the, the only thing the city can do is, is register the licenses. So the state is the only one that issues the license. We as a city can make you register and through the registration process, we can limit, you know, how many licenses for each one of those types of businesses. Yeah.
And my understanding is that the city can only register licenses for retail establishments. So if somebody did not have a retail component, that licensure would stay with the state and would not come through the city for registration.
And that would be like a, like somebody that's a grower.
A grower, yeah.
So that they're just a large scale grower. It's like two acres or more. But there's no type of retail and there's no type of processing. You're just merely growing plants. The other one, probably a wholesale.
What if you're like a distributor, like a grower or distributor?
So there's a wholesaler or distributor license and I, even though you're not selling retail, I'm not sure.
You're selling to an end user. Yeah.
I don't have the definitive answer for that one. But I, I'm pretty confident that if you're just a grower, that that's all you can do is grow and there's no type of retail.
So you'd still have to register with the city probably if you were a distributor.
Given the lack of comfortableness of a council with B three and our discussion about the suitability of the buildings, can we agree as a planning commission that we, we should exclude that for now? And focus on the other zones, knowing that again, this is a, probably an evolving thing.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, regardless of what, what's likely to, what the, what the council's likely to accept. And I, I get that we're trying to find common ground early rather than go through and, you know, propose something that we think is doomed. My thought on all these issues is I, I would do B three and I would do no buffer. I'm mainly concerned with the buffers. I just haven't heard a good rationale for those. Either, either not just today, but also just in general as a, as a zoning tool. The B three thing I'm less concerned about. The B three thing I'm less concerned about, um, but that's, that's my position on that stuff. I, I think the, the buffer thing, just, you know, the purpose of zoning is to have these zones where uses are allowed. And then we, then we get into this patchwork of, well, we're excluding entire zones just by virtue of the buffers, even if it's allowed in a B three, just the, the buffers itself would, would knock it out. So it just gets to, to be, to be like a predictability thing. And also, I'm just not seeing a connection between whether it's a thousand feet or a thousand and one feet that it's gonna have a real effect on, on anything. So CUPs I'd be open to. Basically, I'm, I'm in support of whatever's the least restrictive, that proposal that, that people land on there.
I guess that'd be the other thing is we could do, we could allow them B three and up and put CUPs on them and then we would have some regulation ability.
Well, and building codes, I mean, the building, that's gonna, like, we've talked about, that's gonna filter people out. That's gonna naturally filter people out, they, they can't physically be in certain locations.
And then if someone wants to come in here with a bazillion dollars and buy two buildings and fix them up, more power to them, we'll take the economic development, is that kind of the thought pattern?
I mean, I, I just, like I said, I'm, I'm balancing like us being like a business friendly with, you know, and I, I'm, I'm not downplaying the safety issue and, and, you know, what our police department is, is facing and is gonna face over the next. In addition to what, I mean, the mental health issues and everything that you, that has been exacerbated over the last few years, I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize that at all, but, um, yeah, like I, you know, the, the, the crime rate and I think we can limit timing of operation, hours of operation and things like that where, um, sometimes I think we make issues out of non-issues before they're an issue. But I, I know we're, we're supposed to zone, you know, to not create issues as well, but I just, I guess I'm more along the lines of Ryan. I haven't really heard a good rationale.
I'm struggling with, like, I'm one that says let people do what they want with the business, the building they own, you know what I mean, like that, I struggle with.
Without, without, you know, impacting the safety of others. And that is a condition of a CUP, it has to not.
Right, right.
Well, I mean, as an example, what if we talked about Lincoln School and then the strip mall? That's kind of right in front of it, the new strip mall and a cannabis retail business that came up right there, how would people generally feel about that? So that would be no buffer. It's kind of out in the same vicinity of what we're considering as being reasonable, a reasonable zoning district to have this. I mean, is that, everyone would be comfortable with that?
Like, I'm, I'm fine with buffers by schools, like I said, and by treatment facilities, I understand those two things. You don't want a weed dispensary next to a place where people are, you know, trying to live a sober life, right? That's, I, I get the, the principle of that. In parks, I understand that too, but it's like, thinking about our parks and really the only park that it's gonna impact, because most of our parks are in residential areas, is gonna be this one in Magnuson, maybe.
Maybe Magnuson, depending on not much, where would you go?
You know, around that, so it's just gonna be, it's just gonna impact our downtown.
Yeah, I'm kind of.
And so I just don't see like how.
It's a line, line drawing, you know, experiment for me right now.
Yeah.
If it was Lincoln School and right there, I'd kind of be like, nah, there's other spots, you know, that you can have it. If it was right across the street, I'd probably go, there's other spots. Um, I'm wondering, is 500 and 1,000 feet, um, is there something that we could do less than that that still kind of achieves the same result of having it not be too close to what we could air quote call our sensitive areas?
Well, 250 still got rid of a lot of downtown on that map that you showed us.
Well, like, in like here, like, like, just think about, look out the window. The, the building is to the, to the back, you know, of the park.
Right.
When you're at the park, you're, even if a business is on the other side of that.
Well, like, I'm thinking like, if someone was over there, let's just say the splash pad was a weed dispensary, I mean, like, let's just pretend, I don't know that in this building, it would bother me that it was over there. You know what I mean, like, but, but if it was allowed, you know what I mean, but what we're talking about, it wouldn't be allowed, you know what I mean, like, if this was a school kind of a thing and that was a dispensary, it wouldn't be allowed.
Right, it's like, yeah. I mean, and would we rather have a smaller storefront, I mean, you know, have a retail operation or someone by the Kmart building and have, have to drive by a humongous oper, I mean, you know what I mean? It's, by this, what's, you know, what's being proposed by the committee.
The other thought I think about is if we're only allowing it out in like the B six area, it's gonna be pretty dense out there, you're driving into town and it's gonna be like cannabis, cannabis, cannabis. Like, if we allow a little more spacing, you know, I mean, I just, I feel like the density thing could, could really strike people coming into town too.
If you allow B six and up, that's quite a bit of space.
Yeah, if you, if you.
If you look at the zoning.
The reality is, is how much retail is gonna land anywhere other than B six?
What's the, what's the?
I think that, that's the airport area.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. But I mean, you have, you have a lot of different purple as well. I'm just, if, if we're looking to have a constructive solution that the council may accept and B three is the main sticking point, if you take out B three, you still have a lot of areas in town that are B six, I one, I two, and I, I three, that would be options. And if the only school, if the only school issue is Lincoln, maybe you don't need the school buffer.
That's where I was going, is to allow it without buffers. And you were going to go allow it B three all the way up with no buffers, is that where your head is?
What if you did no B three but no buffers?
Is, do you think the buffers is even a moving point with the council? Or do you think the buffers are really gonna happen?
I think the buffers are gonna happen. Now, if you wanted to make a special buffer for Lincoln School, just because it's out of place, you can make that recommendation and again, I can't tell you if they're gonna accept it or not. I just want to make one point about business friendly. And I think part, this is what I'm trying to get accomplished here, is that we have clear black and white rules. Because I think where we get accused of being not business friendly is when we have people come in and they find something that they want to do in an area where it doesn't fit. And then we try very hard, you know, through a conditional use or some other means to make it work and it doesn't get the green light. I think that's where we get a lot of the pushback that we're not business friendly. And that's kind of my goal here is I don't care what recommendations you make and I don't care what ordinances the council passes. All I want is that it's very clear for whoever comes in and it's fair across the board that if you want to do this, this is the area in which you can do it. Not come in here and say, you know, well, I have this great idea, this is a spot I want to do it, but it's not zoned right. And, you know, what can we do to make it, to make it work? I think that's sometimes where we get the black eye of not being business friendly is that maybe we sometimes try too hard to make things work where they shouldn't, where we should have never had that conversation to begin with, so.
So like, if we go down the line, like Nate, where's your head?
I'm probably more aligned with Ryan than anything, with the exception of the concern of Lincoln School.
And so your preference would be a buffer around Lincoln?
I don't even know if I'm there because even if you look at busing, I mean, they're driving past a liquor store, if the Kmart's gonna be a grow facility or potential to have that. I mean, like, if you're driving in front of it, you're driving in front of it. So I don't know. I definitely wanna, I don't want to see downtown excluded from the retail opportunity. I think that's kind of a big no for me.
Okay, where are you at? Where are you, can we just kind of go down the line?
Sure, I, I look at it a little bit differently. My own opinion is, is that I, I believe that B six and above does have enough space with keeping in mind that the city's only gonna allow so many opportunities. And I believe there's enough opportunity in those zones to do what we want to or what a retailer would want to. I still believe that somebody who comes in and invests $750,000 plus in a business is not gonna want to be downtown in the first place. They're gonna be somewhere in the first place. So I just don't think it's a, it's a, something that needs to, in my opinion, be, be a concern about somebody wanting to be down here in the first place with the number we're going to give, and I don't know what that number is, I don't know if it was determined.
And it might change, I mean, that's the other thing is, is it might be three now and in five years, it might be 20. I mean, we don't know that.
And, and as a city, can't we evolve as well?
We can, it's just this process, yes.
We can't go backwards, no.
Oh, we could go backwards, couldn't we?
I mean, you can technically change your zoning, right, yeah, but.
I think the, the, the part is you want to start someplace where everybody feels comfortable, I think to your point, and that, yes, you can, you can relax the zoning later on, but you can't just say it's a free for all right now and then try to say, oh, you know, once licenses and businesses are established, say, pass an ordinance that say you have to be in a V six and you're in a B two, you have to shut your door.
That's nice.
You're not, it's not gonna fly, no. So I think that's.
And it shouldn't.
Kind of, yes, you're, absolutely, I'd agree with you a hundred percent. So I think that's just, um, I guess my take on it too is find the starting point where everybody has a comfort level. And as you say, as things evolve, it's going to change. And like I said, I think things at the state level are gonna constantly be changing as well.
So where, where are you at?
I think I'm somewhere B, I'm, you know, B three and above with reasonable buffers that I think are probably less than 500 and less than 1,000. I just, I don't want it across the street. And then I'm not sure where I stand on whether it should run through a conditional use process or not.
Okay, I think I've said where I'm at, if you want to say more on your, no, where are you at?
I would start at B six and above, uh, and knowing that we can always expand that to B three in the future, if we choose to do that with the evolving rules at the state level. It's hard, it's hard to know where they're gonna land. So I, I would start there. And if there are specific parcels we feel like are excluded from that, I think it's on the city to rezone those to then open up that opportunity. And then thirdly, I think I would have a modified buffer for Lincoln School, given the unique positioning that it's in. But the other buffers, knowing the council would like to see those, I don't think those would run afoul of any of those other items.
Just for, just for history's sake, and Clara, correct me if I'm wrong, the city tries to avoid initiating rezoning in general, right, on, on the city's behalf?
I mean.
Because we don't want to limit, we don't want to take the retail out to put industrial in, is that right?
It's, it's not a practice that the city has done while I've been with the city, but it'd be like if we had a comprehensive plan and our comprehensive plan said, this is the section of town where we want there to be sales and or manufacturing of cannabis businesses, therefore we will rezone to fit our plan. So in that.
It's an expensive process too, I mean, that's the other thing, we get into the publishing and all of that.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's from when I was here with Karen, she kind of said, you know, the city attorney is not necessarily the most fond on doing this.
It should be part of a strategic.
Right.
It shouldn't just be if the city wants to rezone this parcel on this parcel.
So I mean, I get where you're coming from, but I'm just like, the history of it, it kind of was discouraged, because we were looking at churning some RA stuff and there was other adjoining RA that wasn't being requested. And we were basically told, leave it alone until there's, you know. Sarah, where's your head? Right.
I am at, um, B three and above with a 500 foot school buffer zone, which would take care of the issues, I believe, with Lincoln School. And a 250 foot to 500 foot buffer zone for a treatment facility and a no buffer zone for a parks. Or in the alternative, B six and above with the same buffer zones I just said, with a conditional use permit allowed in B three.
That's an idea. For retail.
Yes, for retail only.
Yep.
I would support that.
That's the middle ground I see.
With the B six and CUP, her second.
Her, no, her B three with CUP.
B three would be a CUP.
For retail.
For retail only.
And then how would you feel about B six CUP for mezzo and micro?
I would just say it's permissible.
In, in B six, yeah, I'd be fine with that, yeah.
Everything in B six and above with those buffers and in a B three, it'd be subject to a CUP.
Everything but cultivator, I would assume.
Yeah.
Everything but cultivator and wholesaler.
Right.
So do we have, I would assume you're, you could live with that, Ryan?
Yeah, you said, you said 250, 2,500 for a, for a buffer on that last part, yeah. My concern with the, with the buff, and so generally, yes, I'm fine with that. My concern with the buffers is that these good things for the community come, come up and then they, they, they have the unfortunate effect of limiting, like, like Lincoln School went into what is clearly a commercial area. Good that we got another school facility, but all of a sudden, the adjoining strip mall owner, you know, and I don't, I don't know, again, I, I haven't heard a good rationale for the, for the buffers. I don't know if we're concerned that kids at Lincoln School are gonna have this craving for sandwiches and coffee and mattresses at the end of the day because of these businesses that happen to be geographically closed. My other thing about buffers is I, I don't think they ever work the other direction where if we located a perfect spot, it was a perfect spot for a school, perfect. But oops, there happens to be within 999 feet a dispensary, so that's crossed off the list. I, I just don't think we would do that because I, and I don't, and I think that's because we, we really don't see it as, as that, that much of a concern. So again, I'd, I'd support whatever the, the most limited proposal is, I think yours is it right now, so.
What, when the Lincoln School, I know the school district owns more land out there. When you guys looked at the buffers with Lincoln School, did you encompass all the school district property?
I believe in one of the maps they did, um, I think they, they started the buffer from the very furthest.
Like the target property line or whatever, okay.
And I don't, I think that's kind of all they own.
Well, now they also own lands across from the Prairie Valley.
No, but I mean, as far as, on the old target building.
They haven't bought more, that, that never got purchased.
I think, I think they looked at some additional land maybe behind like Nelson's auto.
Like those apartments, yes.
Yeah, but I don't know if they ever.
I think they did acquire that.
That's what I had thought, but.
Yeah, because I just, well, I was, I, I planned the playground.
Oh, yeah.
Off of that back corner and our playground goes into that current, the, well, they at least owned that field right behind Nelson's.
Nelson's auto, you might be right.
So then, and that goes to then if they ever expand their, what we thought was industrial behind Fleet Farm, we're all of a sudden going to have buffer issues there.
Sure.
Because if the school already owns all of that back there or a chunk of it.
I think they own that whole tillable field right now.
That's what my gut was.
They lease it out to a farmer, which I don't think they're gonna continue that lease once Lincoln is finished next year.
So does that mean that the maps you guys were working off of probably didn't encompass that land?
I don't know, I didn't make, I didn't make this math.
So I just, I think that's something that maybe this subcommittee needs to look at.
I would just say this, like whatever, and, and again, I'm fine with whatever you guys come up with, with the recommendation. The only thing that I have said to both the council committee and I'll say to you is, be very specific, you know what I mean? Like, um, if, if you're, if you want a reduced buffer downtown, then say it's downtown and what the distance is. And same with Lincoln School, if you want to reduce buffer there, identify Lincoln School as the area and, and clearly state what your recommendation for the reduced buffer is. That's the, that's the only thing I've been trying to get is just.
Clear.
Very clear, concise directions that, that people can look at and either say yay or nay on. That's, that's really about it. But if you want to alter buffers, I would say go for it, but just if you could, any recommendation be very clear as to what, you know, what, what you're looking at for a buffer and where.
So are we at the point that the people that are more B six and above, if there was a buffer in B three and it was allowable in B three, knowing that there are gonna be some things that filter them out on their own, cost, parking location, all those things? If there was a buffer in B three, where do the people that are the B three people or that are the B six people feel about allowing B three with a buffer?
And there was a conditional use?
Conditional use in a B three.
Only allowed in a B three for the conditional permit.
And, and a conditional, or in everything in B six and if the council won't go for that, a conditional use for the micro and the mezzo, mezzo in the B six. Can you wrap your head around that?
I can.
Okay, can you wrap your head around that?
You looking at me?
Yes, I am.
I think, I, I think so, I'm, yeah, we can.
I think, I, I think so. I'm, yeah, we can talk about what the buffers might look like.
Can you wrap your head around that?
I can't. I, I think that to the extent that we can minimize the need for conditional use permits, the better. Just because you get into issues of, you know, subjectivity with those and wanting to be impartial to everybody who applies.
Well, the conditional use, we couldn't deny it. You can't deny a conditional use, just so that everyone's on the same page. You can only put conditions on it. It's allowable. So if you come in in a B three.
You can, you can deny.
Well, you can under.
If it doesn't meet the conditions.
Right. But if you meet all the conditions.
Yeah. So I mean, you could de facto deny it if you just make conditions that are achievable. Right? So you could.
They have to be, I think they have to be reasonable conditions, don't they?
Yes.
Yep, I think they have to be.
So there are five elements to a condition, to granting a conditional use permit. And the applicant has to satisfy to us and the city council that all five of those factors are met. And then if we decided and or the council ultimately decides that those factors are met, the governing body can either approve or deny. And they can approve without conditions, or they can approve with conditions, or they can deny if they don't believe that the.
Then they have to state why they deny.
That the factors aren't, aren't met.
And I think, I think we have to, Clara, can you stand up and speak to this a little? I think we kind of got a bad rap with the council on conditional use permits. But I don't think it was really us and I think it left a bad taste in the council's mouth. Can you speak to that a little bit? So everyone has that background? Cause it, they'd gone really well for the last five years.
Yeah, I think, I think there were, there were other issues with some of the conditional use permits that came forward for, um, for the hemp derived THC sales that were unrelated to the actual findings of a conditional use permit. And then there was misunderstanding, I think, between what the role of the planning commission is in a conditional use permit. And then pushing that on to the city council and then the city council understanding their role. Um, or the entire.
Process.
Process of a conditional use permit that made it look really messy. In reality, that shouldn't be how it is.
So I've, um, I have a lot of experience with conditional use permits from a township and county perspective with feedlots. I represent a lot of farmers and so conditional use permits are a good mechanism for a governing body to use to, when they want to limit it and they don't want it just to have an uncontrolled allowable use. So that an applicant or, you know, a person who wants to use a piece of property for a specific reason, um, that may have concerns like a feedlot, like a dispense, like a dispensary, um, that the governing body can assure that these conditions are met. And it's, you know, generally the health and safety. It's not going to have a negative impact on, you know, other properties around it, you know, things like that.
I agree. I just, I think they've worked well in the past and I think it's, it's a way to deal with things. Sometimes a one size fit all, fits all approach is hard. And it's hard in, you know, one block to even another in downtown or one building to another. And it gives us an avenue that I personally feel has worked well, like Sarah has said, to dealing with things a little bit piecemeal, but yet letting the, the people, the applicant know it's doable if you jump through the right hoops. And I think as business friendly, you have to give that sentiment.
Yeah, but you have to prove to us that you can operate and not impact others around you negatively essentially.
And if we're going to allow conditional use permits for sales like this, then we have to be very sure that the other regulations that the city has regarding, you know, the building permits and things like that, that all of that is communicated to the businesses. So before they even go down the road of a conditional use, that they understand what they're getting into from a regulatory standpoint, and they're not going to try to do something that's unfeasible for the location that they're choosing.
Ryan, from your legal perspective, do you have the same take Sarah does on conditional uses?
I send all my feedlot clients over to Sarah.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. I think it, I think it makes sense. That way you're not category excluding a, a district. And I think, uh, you know, there was that, there was that bar downtown that just closed recently. Wasn't there that?
Gunpowder?
Yeah.
Did they close?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever it was. I mean, I think there, um, you're checking all the boxes of potential concerns, adult activity, uh, late hours, all that kind of stuff. And I, I think a dispensary done right, as determined at the time, uh, with a CUP would fit right in downtown. So.
I see nodding by the chief. Is that?
No, I'm, I, I mean, I'm just.
He's just understanding. He's listening.
No, I don't disagree with some of the arguments. Like I said, I just think it's important that you come up with a recommendation that it's very clear and, and, you know, send it to the council.
Yeah, cause, cause the, the new marijuana laws are super clear, aren't they? Really easy to enforce.
I've told the committee.
They're not.
You can go down so many rabbit holes. And that's, you know, all I'm trying to get across is this keeps creeping, you know, we started this committee on January 1st thinking that we had until late fall. Now the legislature is saying, well, we're going to start issuing permits, you know, maybe as soon as the summer. So that we're under this time crunch and that's all I'm trying to get across is we have to put our zoning in place. And again, it doesn't matter if you're pro cannabis or oppose cannabis. My whole point is so that we have clear rules and so developers know if I want to do this business, I can do it in town, but this is where I have to go. I, and I think we, sometimes we put too much thought on, on what's going to happen in the future. You know, I think by this time next year, the planning commission might have, might address this issue, you know, two more times because it's going to be.
Planning permission, that's the job to plan.
It's going to be evolving so rapidly. So that's all I'm saying is let's just find somewhere where we can start that we're, you know, everyone's in, in general consensus on, and then we, you know, we can move forward. But yes, I think this is going to continue to evolve. I mean, the legislature is going to change their minds.
Three more times.
We have a month left. Yeah, and there's going to be a, a ton of changes coming. So that's, that's my point is just, let's just find a starting point and get going and then we can look at.
So can we all get behind retail, B three, conditional use only? Everything else, B six and up? If the council is not liking B six for Mezzo and Micro, recommend conditional use in B six for Micro and Mezzo. A 250 buffer from parks and treatments.
No parks.
Oh, no parks, sorry. 250 buffer from treatment centers.
From schools.
250 for schools, two or 500?
I, I mean, I, either way, I think 250 for going from the end of the.
Property line?
Right. At Lincoln, because all the other schools are in residential. Right.
250.
Yeah, as long as it knocks out Lincoln School, I'm fine. I mean, I, I understand kind of the rational piece to it, which is like it's, it, it being there isn't going to get kids hooked. But then I also feel this obligation to wear the hat where I have to put myself in the shoes of my fellow countryman in this area and what they're going to think of it. And I just don't think they would appreciate it.
Right.
Can I just make a recommendation that you say what your buffer is for Lincoln School? Just.
Okay.
Just saying.
And don't, yeah, include all the other schools.
Just say Lincoln.
Lincoln School, the buffer is.
So, so treatments, zero, zero for parks. And I, I honestly wouldn't be opposed to 250 for parks, but I can live with zero. Um, zero for parks, 250 for treatment centers. How much for Lincoln School?
So just a point of reference from the, the, the road that drives by the strip mall to get up to Lincoln School is about 360 feet long.
So basically, I, I'm feeling badly if we're allowing it everywhere else, not allowing it down in like that ex accounting building down by the Super eight. I'm, I'm feeling like I personally, if my kid went to Lincoln School, I don't think I would feel badly if there was a dispensary by the Super eight. So I'm struggling with that distance, I guess.
My, uh, my kid does go to that Lincoln School for daycare and I have no problem with the dispensary by the Super eight.
There you go. I just, I just don't know that very many parents are driving by the Super eight on their way home or the way to drop off their child.
Well, and like you said, the school just does own all of that land. So it's going to be a buffer.
Could we do, could we do a buffer? Does it change things if we do a buffer, uh, from, from a school structure rather than a school property line? So we're not concerned about the extra land that they might own? I don't know.
In your recommendation, it's X amount of feet from.
The structure or the, the structure.
I'm going back to Ryan. We're doing no buffer. I'm just kidding.
So what, where are people, where are people at?
If you did it from the structure, 250 feet would cover you for allowing it in the Super eight or that strip mall. From the edge of structure. Now, if they put up a new structure.
Well, even if you did it from the property line, 250 gets you down there. I mean.
So 250 basically is going to at that point exclude Nelson Auto.
And the strip mall.
And the strip mall. I could live with that. Can, I mean, can we live with excluding basically, and, and Bremer Bank? Right? Is that the next one?
Yep.
Is there anyone here that can't live with 250 from the school, from Lincoln?
And, and we would specifically have it be that specific parcel. And so the other parcel that the school district owns, it's just going to be open green space would have no buffer?
Yeah, I guess, I guess it is two, two 11 from corner to corner to that, from parcel to parcel. So yeah, it would be, it would impact the accounting building, the Carlson building. So you could go like 200 and be fine.
200 foot buffer?
You guys just want to say, you guys just want to say Jimmy John's cannot become a dispensary.
That's what I'm hearing. So I'm trying to figure out how to get everyone there.
This property could not have a dispensary in it.
Munchies, it's.
So now I'm kind of hearing, if possible, we want every property around the school to be able to potentially be dispensary. So what buffer can we set to allow that? At that point, do we even need a buffer?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Do we? I don't know. Do we want, I, I, I can see why there is going to be concern with that strip mall. I, I personally don't really have an issue with Nelson's or that Nelson property or the other.
Maybe I should have interjected this a while ago. The strip mall is B two. So.
What?
The strip mall is zone B two.
Oh, so that's irrelevant.
So we don't even.
So if we have B three and up.
Clara, where were you?
Yeah. We could all be at home, Clara.
I thought I said it, but maybe.
So the strip malls be, so what else out there is B?
All right, we're good.
I think then we do.
We're good. So when I do 250 in a, or five, yeah, whatever. It doesn't matter anymore.
Check what I'm looking at, but I'm.
Let's say 250 because we don't want to impact the down by Hardee's.
Do you sleep at night if we do this?
250 will.
Me?
No, him. Oh. Right, where are you at? I, I just, I know we can't always all agree on everything, but it's nice if we can come close where everyone goes home feeling like they got something. Where's Paul at?
B two. Sorry, I thought you guys saw that.
I think 250 would be a fine place to start.
For a proper, a buffer. Okay.
From edge of, edge of property?
From all, for all schools.
Yeah.
250.
I mean, that's the only one right now that's, is going to be a problem is Lincoln.
Didn't we say specifically Lincoln?
Specifically Lincoln?
Lincoln School, yeah.
Okay.
So can every, okay, just to circle back to where I think we've landed. Cause poor Clara and Jill who really want to go home. Um, so I think we're saying retail allowable by CUP in B three. Everything allowed north of B three, including the I zones with, if they don't like, if they don't like Mezzo and Micro in a B six, then we're recommending that that gets downgraded to a CUP in B six. With a 250 buffer from treatment centers.
Daycares?
I forgot about daycares.
Okay, that's really hard. Daycares.
I think if we're doing schools, we gotta do daycares.
Yeah. Okay. From 250 from treatment centers, schools and daycares.
All schools, not just Lincoln.
Yeah, because it's not going to matter at any of the other ones.
And daycares. Okay. Zero park buffer. And it's the property line that the buffer is coming from, not the structure. Correct? Okay, I'm going to repeat this back. Can you tell me?
Well, first of all, before you repeat back, is there anyone here that totally is against what we're talking about at this point? Like, I want everyone to feel like they were heard.
The only comment I would add, I'm, I'm, I would, if everyone's in line with what's been proposed, I would have no problem with it. Uh, the, the new thing I heard there was daycares. I just, again, I don't see the concern when you're talking about daycares because those are even littler kids and I think, uh.
They're not, they can't read.
But if it's a 250 buffer or whatever was proposed, I, again, so it's not across the street or whatever. If that's the concern, then again, I, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm hard conceptually of like, unless you take out a tape measure and show me what 250 feet is, it's hard for me to like conceptualize.
Further than you, I'm always surprised by how much.
Football field's like 300 feet.
That doesn't help people.
Did you get, did you get this one from?
Football field, right?
It's the last page of this.
It shows me how far that is.
Yeah.
250 feet?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So is, are we at, are we all at the same, like this could be doable?
I think if you put that motion on the table, it would pass.
Does someone want to make said motion? Cause I really shouldn't.
Can I read the motion first?
We'd love it. And then we'll figure out, someone, someone pick and choose if they should make it.
Okay, so the motion that would be on the table would be restricting the retail of cannabis products to B three zones with a CUP only. And then allowing everything, all kinds of cannabis businesses in a B six.
Wholesale.
Except for the ones that we wouldn't.
Cultivating.
Yep, except for the ones without retail. Um, in the B six, if that doesn't go well with council, amend it to, um, allow a conditional use permit for the Mezzo or Micro, those types of businesses. 250 foot buffer from treatment centers, schools and daycares. No buffer surrounding parks.
Is there anyone that wants to make that motion?
I guess I'll make it since I.
You started this mess.
I started this mess.
Okay, we have a second.
Plow for that second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Speak now or hold your peace. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hallelujah. Do you have a council update or anything else or can we leave?
No, guys, I didn't think we were going to get here tonight, to be honest. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to.
You with little faith.
Yep.
No, just kidding.
Okay.
Very little faith.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You can just adjourn it.
Okay.